Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this administrative, informal, and workshop session to order at 3:30 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Wiems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. We are on the School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any board members have anything to report? Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much. Whoops, sorry about that. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the following recognitions and celebrations within the community. In the month of October, the community will recognize the following: Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is a time to create awareness and honor the millions of lives affected by breast cancer, and to advocate for equitable access to care and improved survival for all. And I also want to state, Dr. Green is wearing her pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Bullying Prevention Month, which is a time to raise awareness about bullying and promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. LBGTQ+ History Month, founded in 1994 by a Missouri history teacher. This month celebrates the achievements of prominent role models within the LBGTQ+ community. And the following heritages are celebrated within this month: Filipino-American Heritage Month, German-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, and Polish-American Heritage Month. The community recognizes and celebrates their history, culture, and contributions of each of these ethnic and marginalized groups. On October 1st, the community celebrated Yom Kippur, which is a holiday centered around atonement and forgiveness. On October 10th, the community recognized World Mental Health Day to raise awareness of mental health issues around the world and to mobilize efforts to support mental health. On October 11th, the community recognized National Coming-Out Day, which celebrates the anniversary of the 1987 National March on Washington for Gay and Lesbian Rights, and to promote visibility among the LBGTQ+ community as a tool against discrimination. Yesterday, the community celebrated National Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate and honor indigenous Americans and to commemorate their history and culture. The community further recognized Columbus Day yesterday, which commemorates Christopher Columbus's landing in the Bahamas. On October 22nd, the community will recognize International Stuttering Awareness Day, which is intended to raise public awareness of stuttering, which affects 1% of the world's population. This day is not as well-known, however, growing up with a sibling affected by stuttering, I wanted to include this recognition for my sister. And finally, the community will also be celebrating Halloween on October 31st, which is a celebration of the eve of the Feast of All Hallows' Day and the beginning of All-Hallow Tide, which honors the saints or hallows and martyrs and faithfully departed.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other reports, so we will move on to the Mercer Update, and we welcome Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Wiems, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. Joining me this evening virtually is David Keough, Principal with Mercer, and in person, Lynda Mackens, Director of Consolidated Benefits. As we have discussed in prior presentations, the health fund balance is nearing depletion, and we currently do not maintain the recommended reserve of two months of gross costs in our health fund. This challenge has been driven by rapid increases in health care and pharmaceutical claims, often reaching double-digit percentage growth. Additionally, recent projections for plan year 2027 indicate the potential need for both employer and employee contribution increases to sustain the plan. Tonight, Mercer will present two employer-funded scenarios designed to help stabilize the health fund and align with our budget capacity. It is important to note that these scenarios do not affect employee contributions in any way. Should either option be approved for implementation, funding would come from our operating budget, not from the fiscal year 2025 reversion amount. These actions aim to strengthen our financial stability in the health fund and position us for sound planning and decision-making in 2027. As an employer, we have made significant investments in our health plan. We shared with you back in August, there was approximately $27.5 million in additional employer contributions for the health plan over the past five years. Later this evening, I will present two proposed spending plans for the fiscal year 2025 reversion and our share of the revenue-sharing formula, one of which will include a line item for the health insurance fund for your consideration. In November, we will return with an updated report reflecting claims data from July through September of 2025 and an updated health fund balance. As we have emphasized before, maintaining a two-month reserve is critical to ensuring the long-term stability of our health fund. Our goal is to rebuild that reserve while continuing to mitigate increases for both the employer and employees. Following Mercer's presentation, Lynda will highlight the resources available to employees and encourage greater utilization of these tools to help manage health care costs. And with that context, I will now turn the presentation over to David to walk you through the details.
Thank you, Crystal. And if you all could let me know when the slides are visible. There we go. If you could advance, please.
Okay, and we can see it on our it.
All right, great, great. So there's the agenda slide. So as you know, we recently reviewed the projections for, the updated projection for '25, and importantly, the 2026 plan year, and then a preliminary or the initial projection for 2027. So we'll do a quick recap on that, and then the focus of the conversation will be on item number two, which is the alternate scenarios that Crystal mentioned, one of which is a $5 million investment, and one is a $10 million investment. And for reference, for any folks that would like to revisit it, the assumptions and methodology that we covered on the September 9th meeting are there, available for review as well. Next slide, please. All right, so this, hopefully this format looks familiar. We have tweaked it a little bit just for simplicity and to make it a little bit easier to follow. But in essence, this is familiar information, but we'll recap it here, and we'll focus on 2026. So the health plan costs that you see there, the gross costs, nothing has changed. We've used data through June. That was the update in the previous message, and we'll continue to update these on a quarterly basis as data becomes available. But this is the same time period. So the gross costs in 2026, you'll see there at $133.7 million. That's increased about nine and a half percent over the 2025 update, and then similarly, about a 10% increase for 2027 is what is projected. And so you'll see the employer contributions in that 2026 column are $105.7 million, and that, it was based on the budgeted amount. We'll talk about how that would change with an additional investment. But as that flows down, employees and retirees also are making a contribution, and that's $18.4 million. So the sum of all those contributions are $124.1 million, and that is obviously below the $133.7 that's projected gross costs. And so $9.6 million will come from the health fund to round out the total funding of the $133.7 million. And so you can see there, the next row, the health fund balance as of June of 2025, which is the period through which this data represents, is $10.7 million. And then that drawdown, that $9.6 million drawdown that I referenced, is projected to leave a balance of $1 million. And so the best practice, Crystal referenced, the target reserve represents about two months of plan expenses. So two-twölths of that $133.7 million is equivalent to $22.3 million. And so you can see, as it stands currently, the $1 million balance covers just a small fraction of the desired reserves. So if I may, so we're showing it also on a fiscal year when we show the investments. So I'll move forward. The 2027, again, that was the initial projection based on data through June. We'll use updated data to get more precise on that. But similarly, the health fund balance is well underfunded based on current projections as they stand. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the first of the two scenarios. So if you could go back one slide, please. Yep, there we go. So this scenario represents an infusion of $5 million. And so again, I'll focus you on 2026. So this infusion of the $5 million would come in via the employer contribution funding. So in that 2026 column, you'll see the employer contributions are $110.7 million. Employee and retiree contributions, as mentioned, are unchanged. And so that reduces the drawdown on the health fund to $4.6 million. So as that flows through, there's a direct correlation between the projected balance. It was $1 million, and under this scenario, it's $6 million. So the infusion of the $5 million does not immediately impact employees and retirees. It strictly improves the budget situation and specifically the health fund balance by that $5 million. And so that $6 million is now, as a percentage of the target, the desired $22.3 million reserve, that represents about 27%. So it better positions the plan going forward for stability and positions you to make decisions going forward that meet your budget constraints as you work towards generating funds to cover that desired two months of reserves, which is the $22 million in 2026. So if we can move to the next slide, the math will flow similarly, but with the $10 million infusion, you'll see...
Can you pause for just a second? Because you're going over a lot of numbers, and I think we may have a question, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand it. You've indicated that we have an infusion of $5 million, and that changes the employer contribution. But you had indicated that there was no change in the employee or the retiree contribution. But I'm seeing different numbers under the 2026 column for those numbers. And I wanted to make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
Okay, so on the $18.4 million represents the 2026 aggregation of the employee and retiree contributions, and that figure should be identical on the exhibit that shows the infusion of the $5 million.
If I could add, the difference, when you see the lower amount, that's when you're looking at the fiscal year page? So on... What paging you referenced?
Okay, that may be, that may be the answer then. I want to make sure I was following.
And I'm sorry, I'm not doing a good job with advancing the slides, so that's probably where the confusion came in.
And that's important, that we make sure we're all on the same page together. So okay, thank you. That's probably the clarification that I needed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And so we've moved past that fiscal year slide. If I may take a moment just to address that, those figures on the fiscal year represent an earlier timeframe. So the plan year for 2026 runs January 1st through December 31st of 2026. The fiscal year for 2026 ends June of 2026.
David.
And so we use all...
Could you clarify what slide you're on, so I can make sure they're saying the right thing?
Yes, it's the fiscal year slide. I think it's...
Are you on $5 million?
Actually, if we could just take a quick look at the one before the investment, I think that'll just orient the notion of the fiscal year versus the plan year.
I'm sorry. So this is the plan, we're on the plan year right now? And you want to be on, okay, is this the one you want to be on?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, so yeah, so for the plan year, so the infusion of the $5 million changes the employer contributions. That's essentially at the top, the only numbers that change, and then that $5 million will flow through. So you can follow the math that will result in the health fund balance projected for the plan year to be $6 million. And that's for the plan year. So the difference between the fiscal year and the plan year is that the fiscal year ends six months sooner. And so since we're not projecting quite as far out into the future, essentially, we're knocking off six months because the fiscal year ends June of 2026, the projection is lower. So you'll see that the gross cost figure is actually lower. It was, it was $133.7 million, and in this exhibit here, you'll see for the fiscal year, it is a little bit lower. It's $127.6 million. That is all due to the timing to which we are projecting. So the plan year ends December, fiscal year ends in June, and so we have, we did not need to account for six months of health care trends. So we've talked about using about a 9% annual trend when we project the data forward. Since we're not projecting the six months of the latter half of 2026, the projection is reduced by about three-quarters of a percent per month. That 9% annual trend equates to about three-quarters of a percent per month. And so when that comes down, the math will flow, and the figures are a little bit, are a little bit more favorable. But it's a timing issue, and we do this within the benefits committee because we know you do budgeting on the fiscal year, the plan runs on the calendar year. So we just try to look at it both ways, and we need to make the appropriate adjustments to allow for what's expected over time. If there are no questions on that, Lynda, we could jump to the $10 million. Is there some questions?
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify, and Ms. Mackens, I'm sure that you can clarify this for me. So on slide seven, when we have the $5 million increase, this does nothing for the employee as far as their premiums or anything. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
That is correct.
Okay, that's correct. And then the $5 million increase on this particular slide seven, is that coming from the operating budget or the, okay, so that is the one that's coming from the operating budget? Correct. Okay. I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Lynda. So the slide here shows the impact of the $10 million increase on the 2026 year. So you'll see that that employer contribution row increases to $115.7 million, and similarly, employee and retiree contributions are unchanged at $18.4 million. And so there is a reduction in the reliance upon the health fund. So that balance is, as of June, is still $10.7 million, but the drawdown from the health fund is essentially mitigated in that it's only about $400,000. And so that resulting balance in the health fund is $11 million. The targeted health fund reserve is unchanged. It's $22.3 million. And so that, that reduced reliance upon the health fund leaves the balance at $11 million, which is five, or excuse me, $10 million higher than the original projection, and that's about 50% of the target. So that additional infusion adds some stability and, you know, contributes to your ability to make decisions going forward as you decide what's the, what's the acceptable balance and cost share between employees, retirees, and the employer funding. Are there, are there any questions about that?
You can continue. You can continue.
Okay, so I'll just touch on 2027 too. So we've talked about that being approximately a 10% increase over 2026 in terms of the gross costs. And so the 2027, you'll recall during the last session, we, we talked about the fact that there are only two sources of funding in 2027 with the intentional non-reliance on the health fund. So the funding has to come from the combination of the employer and the employee/retiree contributions. And so that exhibit continues that cost sharing and try, you know, intentionally does not rely on the health fund balance to add that stability there. And so again, that was the initial increase based on the data through June for 2027. So are there any questions at all about 2027? I know we're focused on 2026 and the repercussions of the, of the investment.
You can continue.
Okay, so that, that rounds out the slides to illustrate the financial impact. Linda, I know you are going to talk about some of the opportunities for, for employees to further engage in the health plan.
Yes.
But I'm happy to, to address any, anything that's outstanding.
And just to final it out, that Slide 10 was the fiscal year projections for the 10 million. So similarly, as he was discussing on the 5 million option, the 10 million option for the fiscal year would bring it, the health fund balance to 13.6. So I just wanted to cover that slide.
Clarification purposes, since there are different numbers, from your point of view, as it relates to guiding us, would you be indicating that we should be focusing our attention on the plan year numbers or the fiscal year numbers?
The plan year numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melnig?
I just want to just also make sure that the $10 million, this is what I wrote down. The infusion of the $10 million adds stability to allow us the opportunity to discuss the balance between employee and employer contributions. Not that it's really going to do anything.
It's, the opportunity to increase the employer contribution is intended to be a direct impact to the health fund balance, so that the additional 5 million or the additional 10 million will ultimately increase our health fund balance. And it'll just provide a better opportunity for us to make decisions on what we do for 2027.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
It's not advancing. So I went through his methodology and assumption slides that he mentioned. And just here at the end, we just wanted to add some information about resources that employees and retirees can use when managing their healthcare costs on saving on their out-of-pocket healthcare expenses. And since our plan is self-insured and pays a cost share of the claims incurred by our members, savings are also achieved by the plan for any of these cost-saving measures. The left column in this slide represents what an employee can do to save on costs. And the right column basically explains the why and why it matters. So looking at the first option, the first resource listed is, know before you go, right place of service. So choosing the right place of service helps avoid unnecessary expenses at the cost of, as the cost of care varies widely among the type of provider being seen. Virtual visits are the lowest cost of care, followed by primary care docs, walk-in clinics, specialists, and urgent care facilities, and in life-threatening situations, the emergency department. Members can also contact the Centerra 24/7 nurse line at no cost, where the nurse can assess the medical situation and advise where to seek care or offer self-care options when appropriate. So just something to think about, virtual care is an option, perhaps instead of going to an urgent care facility or even in the middle of the night, if it's something like an ear infection for a child type of thing. So just some resources there. The next one is know before you go comparing costs for healthcare providers and pharmacies. Costs also vary among the doctors, facilities, and pharmacies for the same service or prescription. Members can price the cost of service among providers and facilities using the treatment cost estimator on the Centerra website and by using the pharmacy tool to price a medication. The pharmacy tool can also provide lower-cost alternative drugs, if available, that the member can speak with their provider about to determine options for their care. The next is know before you go, preferred healthcare providers. Members pay a lower copayment or co-insurance amount if they seek care from providers in our preferred Centerra Quality Care Network, otherwise referred to as SEQUIN. This network of clinicians participates in an accountable care organization, bringing together providers that are measured against their peers and focus on quality outcomes, which effectively lowers the cost of care. A few more here, know before you go, preferred retail pharmacies. Members also pay a lower copayment or co-insurance for prescriptions filled at preferred pharmacies. I won't name them all, they're listed on the slide, but like Walgreens, Walmart, Sam's Club, there's Wegmans, other options for having a lower copay or co-insurance. You can also look on that pharmacy tool that I mentioned to actually look at what your prescription would cost at all of those pharmacies. The next one is don't miss out on free money, Health Savings Account, or HSA. Members enrolled in the Consumer Driven Health Plan are eligible for the HSA if they do not have any other health coverage, like Medicare, TRICARE, or a spouse's plan, for example. There is a $750 employer contribution for those enrolled in subscriber-only coverage and $1,250 employer contribution for all other tiers of coverage. But the member must elect the coverage annually to get the employer contribution, even if they are not contributing their own funds. Contributions and earnings are tax-free, and the account never forfeits and remains with the employer. I'm sorry, it remains with the member even after termination from employment. So when they leave employment, it's an individual account, so it stays with them, and those funds can be used on medical expenses. The last one is earn $500 with Be Well or our Beach Employee Wellness Program. Virginia Beach has an extensive wellness program to help support our members with their health and well-being and can earn up to 500 annually in rewards by engaging in wellness activities, health and lifestyle support programs, condition management, preventive activities, cancer screenings, physical activity, and sleep tracking, wellness support tools, resources, and a whole lot more. Engaging in Be Well allows our members to take a proactive approach that may prevent, provide early detection to, or help manage their conditions. So just a few resources, there are many others, but we wanted to provide you with some of those high-level opportunities that our members can take advantage of. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Can I just get clarification before I get to the next person in line? Since there was two proposals, $5 million, the $10 million proposal from the operating budget, I just want to make sure that the full board is clear that you're asking us to consider this for a future vote, correct?
Yes, and so if, if I can answer that question, Regina, can you pull up Slide 4, please?
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here about what we're discussing.
Okay, all right. So if you're looking at Slide 4, and this is the first slide that David went over, I want to draw your attention to the left column, middle row, says health fund balance as of June 2025. David talked about that number is the same one we saw in our last presentation. That number is going to change because when we come back to you in November, we'll have the next quarter information on claims. So that number is going to change because these are all projections based on trends. And that's the dilemma of trying to make predictions to determine costs. So there's no decisions yet. We'll come back to you in November and have a better idea when we get to see what impact the health fund balances, has, what impact has occurred on the health fund balance because of claims. But right now, our dilemma is we have a health fund balance projected at $1 million, which we know is incredibly risky. And we're signaling to you in October that it is highly likely we're going to come back to you in November and ask you to consider somewhere between $5 and $10 million to pull from the operating budget, this year's operating budget, to put into the health fund. Now, we know we operate our budget at about 98%. And we know our operating budget is roughly $1 billion. So we know that every year, that if we stick to 98%, that's going to give us roughly a $20 million cushion. We know that you will see later tonight the impact of our fiscal practices that have returned greater than $20 million to, to the board to then ask the city for reversions. So pulling money out of the operating budget will mean that you are basically acknowledging that at the end of the year, you're not going to have $20 million. You're going to have some number less than $20 million because it's going to be coming out of that, that funds. So $5 million is something we're comfortable with. $10 million, we'd get a little anxious because you never know, one significant issue at $10 million doesn't go that far. So these are decisions that you will be asked to make, but not now. But we wanted to signal it now to give everybody plenty of opportunity as we continue to educate the public on the nuances of trying to predict healthcare coverage and costs and employee/employer costs.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Rogers?
So you did answer my first question, which is where would the money be coming from? And you're basically telling us that it will be coming from sort of reversion funds, but not really, because it's coming from the funds we would have given back to the city and then asked for back in reversion funds. So that answered that question. I guess then, one of the, the things I heard David say was as you decide what's acceptable for cost share between the employer, retirees, and the employee, and the employees as we move on, but is that not something that we do not have control over since we're in a, and our benefits are with the city? So we don't have control over those?
We do have control over the funding. We are.
No, 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 and we're talking about the cost share.
Right, the cost share can be different between the city and the schools.
So.
Because we, our plan are, are looked at separately when it comes to cost between the city and the schools. What we do share is the same plan design.
So it's plan design that we share, and we could, we could do a different cost share amount. I guess my next question is, how does any of this help our staff?
Well, it, it helps with providing stability in the health fund.
Right, but that doesn't.
But there is, there, this, this, these options do not provide a change to their 2026 rates.
Right, and so that's what I guess my question is, simply because I've been having many meetings with staff. I've had staff crying on my shoulder, literally crying because of the cost increases. I fully understand the predicament we're in. Having $1 million is extremely risky, to the point where we could get ourselves in some serious trouble. That is what I want to avoid, but I also feel that this is not sustainable, the cost for especially some of our lower-paid staff. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing we can't help the staff in this scenario or with our healthcare at this time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, with cost. Thank you.
Mr. Callen?
If I could direct my question to Crystal. Crystal, Dr. Robertson has just given an indication of the direction that we could go in. But as the CFO and the one who would be guiding us relative to financial matters more so, is there going to be a suggestion as to the 5 or the $10 million number from a prudence of financial management point of view?
I would say yes. And as Dr. Robertson mentioned, as we get additional information and move closer to the timeframe in which a decision needs to be made, and we come back to the board to discuss that and to show you what that looks like, at that point in time, we will be able to share additional information of what direction we think would be prudent.
And that would be coming in the form of a recommendation?
It could be a recommendation, yes. It would, it would be. I mean, it's still going to be a little early for us because we still won't have like state budget, we're still going to be working with projections. I mean, as you know, we'll be doing a five-year forecast in November, but those are assumptions that are made and, and you know how all those work. But we'll definitely have more information regarding the claims, what our health fund balance looks like based on having the higher employee contributions as well as what we've infused into the health fund. So we'll have a better picture of what that looks like when we come back to you in November. And then about that time, it'll be, I'm not knowing what the dates are, November 18th is our four, five-year forecast presentation. And so we might have a better look at what that is, and we'll make those recommendations based on that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
Thank you. You may not know the answer to this, but do you know how our employee costs compare to the city? The city employees?
So currently in 2025, they're lower. That's what we were presenting in the prior presentations. In 2023, we reduced rates significantly. So through 2023 to 2025, they're lower than the city. And beginning in 2026, the annual cost will be the same. Now, for schools, we have 20 pay, you know, pay periods, where the city currently has 26. They'll be going to 24. So when you look at their per-pay period amount, it may look different, but the annual cost will be the same in 2026.
Okay. I recall seeing this in any of the slides, a definition of what the, the health fund reserve is for.
Well, the health, being self-insured, employer and employee funding goes into the health fund that we manage. And we pay our Centerra, our third-party administrator, an administrative fee. So we don't provide them with the fund, the premiums and the employer contribution. They are just paid an administrative fee. And they bill us weekly on the provider claims that come in that they've adjudicated and that we owe to the providers, basically. So we, as self-insured, assume the liability and the risk of the claims. And so the reserve is meant to be there in case you do have higher costs than were projected. So that's the intent of building up the health fund reserves.
Higher costs than projected in the current year.
Right.
But we're actually budgeting, planning to, planning to spend the health reserve, which is obviously not a good thing. That's what, this is not really a question ultimately, I'm just trying to see if I'm accurately framing how bad this is. Because I see, I see a $23 million shortfall, and that's after we infuse $40 million into health services over the next two years. Is that accurate, is that accurate?
The, if we're looking at Slide 4, at the end of calendar year 2026, the projected health fund balance is $1 million. What you're seeing below that is the projected two months reserve. So for good, best practice is to maintain at least two months of cost in a reserve. And that equals 22.3 million. And so basically, what, what David is showing here is that because we only have, we're only projected to have 1 million, we'll be below the best practice having reserves by 21.3 million.
Yeah. And I'd just add to that, that's, that's a good explanation. I would, I would just add the context that the health fund has operated as, as intended. So with the escalation in costs, and particularly high-cost claimants driving your plan to exceed the budget over each of the last two years, that health fund reserve was there to provide the, the stability and the funding for that, those two. the, the, the stability and the funding for that, those two years that were, were, were higher than projected without that fund. And had, had you not done the prudent activities you did in the past to establish and maintain that fund, it, it, it would have been a, you know, a much different challenge. And so having weathered the storm and, and relied upon that fund that you had built up, the current challenge is to work towards, not, not all at once, but work towards reestablishing that fund so that it can continue to operate as it has in the, in the recent past.
Yeah. Okay, that's exactly what I was getting at. So we, on that same slide, it's, you were, the employer contributions increase $5 million next year? That's a projection, right? And this is the calendar year one, so I mean, I know that doesn't line up exactly with fiscal year, but I see a $5 million, or it's almost $6 million increase in '26, and then an additional $20 million, an additional $20 million increase in '27. So we're throwing $30 million at, at it already, and we still have a $23 million deficit that we have to make up. And I agree with that, that we're not going to make it up all at once. Am I saying this wrong?
Yeah.
What am I, what am I saying wrong? Oh, no, she said I'm wrong. I'm asking her why I said wrong.
Well, it's not a, it's not a deficit, it's just below anticipated or projected reserves.
Well, it's a budget deficit. We need $23 million more at this problem. Yeah. I don't know why you're saying no, that's exactly what it is. And David just said, and I agree with him, we're not going to, we can't make that up over one year, we don't have that, I don't think. So it's really just a question of how quickly we need to make up this $23 million problem. Call it, call it a problem, call it whatever you want, it's deficit.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. Ms. Mackinson or Ms. Pay, in any of the estimates, the projections that you have, do they reflect administrative fees? They do reflect administrative fees?
Yes, that gross cost include, at the top of each of those slides, includes all costs that it takes to administer the plan. So administrative fees, the claims, other costs, other administrative costs. We have a stop-loss plan that we have to, for reinsurance for those high-cost claims. It includes, you know, costs to, you know, for consulting, or if we had any outside legal counsel, and also our, some of our wellness programming cost.
So with the administrative fees, and I'm just using one area as an example, where related to what medical, say consultations, I guess it varies based on how much time is spent on it, or the nature?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the question.
Okay. So the administrative fees, how are they scaled?
The administrative fee is a set per member per month cost that is paid to our third-party administrator. And there's also a set per member per month cost paid to our stop-loss reinsurance carrier. So when you're talking about claims, that is what's volatile. And that's what you can't always predict, but that's what we're doing is projecting the future.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Thanks. Between '26 and '27, the overall employee and retiree contributions increased from 18.4 million to 22 million. Do we know approximately what that increase would look like per employee if we're having a three and a half million dollar increase?
A three and a half million dollar increase?
From 18.4 million to 22 million?
Sorry, what is the question?
The employee and retiree contribution from 2026 to 2027. It's projected to be 18.4 million in 2026 and 22 million in 2027. So that is about three and a half million dollar increase for employees and retirees. Do we know then approximately what the increase would look like for our employees per person if that is the projected increase? Like, basically, I'm asking, we know how much they have to pay right now, what does that increase look like for them in '26 to '27?
We haven't looked at the individual cost per plan, per tier at this time, because that's where we, we, we wait and get that information, once we have a better idea from budgeting and whether or not there's this additional funding. And once we have a better idea of where we're going, that's when we might start looking at the individual costs.
Okay, so then let me ask you this. Should there not be an infusion, as, as David put it? Should there not be an infusion? Would that then equate to a higher employee retiree increase in their costs to make up that fund?
No, this additional funding for the five or 10 million is a direct impact to the health fund reserves.
Right, but I'm saying, for, if we don't do it, if we do nothing, and it stays at a million, is that going to then result in higher premium costs for our employees so that we can then put some of that in the fund? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, I think we're just not at that point to know what we're, you know, what the increase for the employees will be in 2027.
No, no, I'm not asking if we, but would it result in an increase for them if we did nothing, likely?
Yeah, I would say, Ms. Rogers, the, yes, it would put upward pressure on, on the employee contributions by virtue of the fact that the plan would not be, would, would not be in as favorable a position.
Right, so we wouldn't be sustainable.
And so then, you all would have the dilemma to say, what are we going to do to whatever, whatever increment that you're looking for to, to reestablish your health fund and, and, and try to replenish it? It would put upward pressure on your decision as to where to get that money.
That's what I was looking for. So should we do nothing, we are then putting that burden on our staff instead of trying, like, that's where we need to help out. So that's what my question was. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that, that's a, that's a very important observation that, that you've made there. Thank you for drawing, drawing that out. I would say that element is really important. The other element is taking a proactive approach to fund this is, is just that. You're, you're, you're making it on, on your terms with, with the ability to deliberate, monitor the data, and, and make a decision. Whereas if you do nothing, and that margin is as slim as it would be at 1 million, you could find yourself in a situation where you're having to react, and you, and you may not have the, you know, the time or the, or the ability to deliberate as, as you would prefer.
That makes a huge difference. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because as we were having this discussion, it seems to me that there, I'm just going to, I'm going to call it an account for, for purposes of clarity here. It sounded to me like there may be another account that we're using as a division to pay out those expenses, and only when those expenses are greater than anticipated is when we go into the reserve fund. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's just accounted for and/or, or shown separately, but it's all the same health fund. So all of the funds that go in and come out are going into the same fund, separate from, from the city, but for the schools. And so we're calling it a reserve because that's the amount that we need to, to hold, but it's not a separate account.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to, to clarify, because I wanted to make sure that my initial interpretation, which is that this health fund balance is what we do use to pay all of these expenses related to healthcare for our employees and families that are on our insurance in this division. And so, you know, I definitely think that these conversations needs to continue, because I marked it here, that it, it almost seems like it's in crisis mode if we don't do something or a potential crisis. And I, I think that that would be avoidable, so little uncomfortable about the applying funds that would usually be reserved, reversion funds later. I'm a little uneasy about that, but that's a different conversation. But I, I just wanted to clarify so that I made sure I had a complete understanding. Well, I don't see any more additional questions, so thank you. We will now move on to middle school dual-language immersion considerations, and we welcome Dr. Crystal Wilkerson, Director of Office of K-12 and Gifted Programs.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Crystal Wilkerson, Director of K-12 and Gifted Programs, and I'm joined today by Mrs. Kelly Arbel, the K-12 World Languages Coordinator. Today, I will revisit the proposed options for the Middle School Dual-Language Immersion or DLI program, originally presented at the September 9 school board meeting. I will also present additional considerations related to these options, shared, share results from the DLI family survey, and highlight questions raised by school board members. Let's begin by reviewing key aspects of current discussions regarding the Middle School DLI program. While the program is both valued and impactful, it continues to face persistent staffing challenges, particularly in hiring qualified teachers for both immersion Spanish and immersion social studies courses. These challenges have already resulted in the removal of eighth-grade civics Spanish immersion at both schools, reducing the program's fidelity and compromising its long-term sustainability. Alongside these existing challenges, the program is scheduled to expand to Virginia Beach and Bayside Middle Schools in the 2027-28 school year, as the current grade four DLI students move up to middle school. These pending expansions prompted us to raise concerns with both the school board and the community, as the expansion could increase these challenges. As shown on this chart in the slide, the top two rows represent the current elementary and middle school DLI feeder patterns. The bottom two rows, highlighted in yellow, reflect, reflect the expansion plan approved by the school board in the fall of 2019. Under that plan, two additional DLI programs would be added at Bayside and Virginia Beach Middle Schools, beginning in the 2027-28 school year. Recognizing the current challenges with staffing and program fidelity, our division's world language team began exploring alternative options for consideration. As a reminder, proposed solutions were developed collaboratively and were presented to the board on September the 9th. Option one consolidates the middle school DLI program at Virginia Beach Middle School, offering immersion Spanish and at least one core class, either math or science, in Spanish. All elementary DLI programs would feed into Virginia Beach Middle School, which was already designated to receive Cooks DLI students in the 27-28 school year. With this option, no new program would be added at Bayside Middle School, and the DLI programs at Landstown and Great Neck Middle School would be phased out after the current fifth-through-eighth grade students complete grade eight. Beginning in '27 and '28, all DLI sixth graders would attend Virginia Beach Middle School. For option two, this would not include a designated middle school DLI site. Immersion Spanish 1 through 3 would be offered as a course to DLI students, either in person or through distance learning at their zoned middle schools. Based on feedback from the board and the community, an immersion Spanish 1 through 3 course sequence would be offered instead of the traditional Spanish 1 through 3. To be very clear, as with any elective course, offerings are always dependent on student enrollment, minimum class size requirements, and staffing availability. The proposed adjustments to middle school DLI would only affect students currently in DLI kindergarten through fourth grade, once they reach middle school in the 27-28 school year. We want to reassure families that no current DLI middle school students at Great Neck or Landstown would be required to change schools. As seen here, under option one, current DLI students in grades K through 4 would attend Virginia Beach Middle School, beginning in the 27-28 school year, as sixth graders. An additional grade level would be added each year until all DLI students attend Virginia Beach Middle in the 29-30 school year. Students currently in grades 5 through 8 would continue with the program as it is currently designed until they attend their zoned high school. Under option two, current DLI students in grades K through 4 would attend to their zoned middle school, beginning in the 27-28 school year. An additional grade level would be added each year until all DLI students attend their zone middle school in the 29-30 school year. The next slide will show this grade level phasing out of the current middle school Under all of the administration's proposed options for the school board, DLI students currently enrolled in the grades 5 through 8 would not be impacted. The chart on this slide shows the timeline for phasing out the programs at Great Neck and Landstown Middle School. Proposed program changes have required multiple departments from teaching and learning, school leadership, human resources, and school division services to collectively analyze the challenges and options. In doing so, benefits for both options emerge, of which I will review. In option one, operating from a single site addresses persistent challenges related to staffing, while also supporting improved program fidelity. I will pause while you take a moment to read the slide. For option two, returning students to their zoned middle school addresses challenges related to hiring bilingual core content teachers, while still offering a pathway to continue studying Spanish in grade six. It should be noted in this option, however, it will create its own staffing challenges with hiring part-time Spanish teachers across the seven feeder middle schools, which can be more challenging to staff than full-time positions, and impacts the distance learning schedule. Teacher assistance may be needed, and stipends would be necessary for teachers. Again, we have collaborated with our colleagues from other departments and have completed an extensive cost analysis. As shown in the chart on this slide, the top two rows represent the current estimated cost of the middle school DLI program, and an estimate of projected cost if we were to continue to expand to the other two middle schools as approved by the school board in The bottom two rows reflect the two proposed solutions that we're bringing forward for your consideration, to address the staffing and fidelity challenges of the program that we have shared. Option one represents an increase of approximately $156,200 from the current model, and option two represents a savings of around $97,900 compared to the current model. 2 represents a savings of around $97,900 compared to the current model. Both options represent a savings when compared with the original plan, to add two middle schools, which is approximately $220,000 more than the current model. Neither of the proposed options demonstrate a significant budgetary impact. Consequently, staff and program fidelity continue to be the primary factors driving the Middle School DLI considerations. Other factors were also considered, such as transportation for students. Although from a cost perspective, there is not a significant transportation savings at full implementation, there are some considerations for families of the Middle School DLI program if it moves to a single site. As with the current model for students who are attending the Middle School DLI program, students will continue to be on the zero bell schedule, like the Academy programs, which extends the school day by an hour. DLI students who would attend Virginia Beach Middle School would also be considered Virginia Beach Middle School students, and would be able to participate in student activities and sports at Virginia Beach Middle School. Now let's review the results from the community input that was gathered. The online survey was administered from September 16th through the 22nd, and included translated surveys in a variety of languages, and additional paper surveys were available. Department of Teaching and Learning staff worked with the Communications Department to distribute the survey via Parents Square to 1,175 parents and guardians who represented 819 elementary students in the program. A total of 412 responses were received, for a response rate of 35%. This is a higher response rate than we typically see for family surveys, usually around 10%. Responses from these 412 parents or guardians represented 523 students, or 64% of the students in the elementary program. Respondents also had the opportunity to provide comments. 247 of the survey respondents provided a comment, and copies of those responses are provided to you in your School Board materials. When results were analyzed for the question, "If the Middle School DLI program is shifted to a single-site model at Virginia Beach Middle School, would your child continue in the DLI program after elementary school?" Results varied by school, but overall, 42% of parents who responded to the survey reported needing more information before deciding. 36% indicated their child would continue the DLI program at Virginia Beach Middle School, and 22% indicated their child would attend their zoned middle school. When results were analyzed by school, Cook had the largest percentage of respondents, at 75%, that indicated their student would continue the program at Virginia Beach Middle. Bayside had the largest percentage indicating that they needed more information, followed by Allington and Christopher Farms, and then Trantwood. Trantwood had the largest percentage indicating their child would attend their zoned middle school, at 37%. When results were analyzed for the question, "If the Middle School DLI program were to change in any way, would your student continue to be in the elementary DLI program at their current elementary school?" A high percentage of parents, at 87%, indicated their child would continue in the DLI program at their elementary school, regardless of how the middle school program operates, and percentages were high for each school. By "school," the percent indicating they would continue in the elementary program ranged from 80% at Trantwood to 95% at Cook. We felt it was important to uplift a couple of questions asked from School Board members in response to constituents' concerns. The final few slides share some of these questions and their accompanying responses. Question: My child is currently a student attending 6th grade at Great Neck Middle School. Will my child have to change schools? Answer: This change will only impact DLI students currently in grades K through 4. Current 5th graders will continue with the program pathway, and current 6th through 8th graders will remain at Great Neck or Landstown Middle School. Question: How many DLI educators are teaching in our division who are here on a visa? Answer: One. However, this is the final year of her visa eligibility. After this year, we will have no DLI educators teaching in our division on a visa. Question: With visa sponsorship funding cut, are there alternative plans to recruit international or bilingual teachers? Answer: VDOE offers the ITEACH alternate route-to-licensure program, focusing on offering aspiring potential educators an accessible and affordable opportunity to earn their teaching certification in Virginia. This has given us the opportunity to obtain qualified candidates for our DLI program. And finally, question: How would these changes affect families' access to after-school programs and extracurricular activities, especially those who may be assigned to schools farther from home? Answer: If the DLI program moves to a single site, they will participate in programs as students of Virginia Beach Middle School. Transportation will continue to be provided for after-school activities, but longer ride times can be expected for after-school activity bus runs. Non-school-sponsored after-school activities may be impacted by a longer commute. As a final reminder, displayed here are the options for you to consider for our proposed We want to thank you for your time, and we will return to the School Board relating to these options on October the 28th. And at this time, I invite our World Languages Coordinator to join me to answer any questions that you might have. Ms. Rogers?
I thank you so much for the presentation. For my colleagues, I just wanted to reiterate on Slide 14, where it shows the plan for Middle School program. Cook Elementary had a 75% response that they would continue with the DLI program at VB Middle. Cook feeds to VB Middle, so that is their homeschool, so I just wanted to make that clear, in case anybody wasn't aware. A couple of questions that I have. On Slide 20, about the extracurriculars, transportation will continue to be provided for after-school activities. Will this run kind of like our academies, where if you stay after school, and you don't live in the zone, you can't take the activity bus, you have to have parent transportation? At least that's...
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm Chuck Blair, the Transportation Routing Coordinator for Routing and Analytics. And at all of our academies, we offer after-school transportation, no matter where you live within the city. So if you live within the eligibility guidelines for that academy, we offer after-school transportation for after-school activities. We don't tell parents to transport their own children unless they reside outside the eligibility zone, such as the Achievable Dream Academy doesn't have a full-city eligibility zone, they only have a partial city. But anywhere where children are eligible to attend that program, we offer after-school activity buses.
So you're telling me I was the fool picking up my kid all the time at Salem?
I'm not going to call anyone a fool, by any stretch.
It's fine, it's fine. That's perfect. And then my other question is, and I'm not exactly sure who this is for, it's probably not you. You talked about that we do not have a dual-immersion 8th grader middle school teachers right at the moment, correct?
We do not have a dual-immersion 8th...
For social studies.
Oh, for social studies, yes.
Okay, so do we have the educators we would need for a one-site dual-immersion at the middle school? And, follow-up to that, should anyone leave, is that going to create a problem? Because obviously, if we have them this year, year to year, you know, we don't know, so do we have enough, is my question, to make this sustainable?
Sure, that's a great question. So, one of the reasons that we were looking at moving that to core content for math and science, is because we are anticipating it would be easier to staff, because we would have teachers that might have that certification in those areas, much more readily accessible than for social studies. So, we aren't anticipating the same staffing challenges that we currently have with the social studies.
Okay, and then for Option 2, it says make high school credit Immersion Spanish available, so it is not Spanish 1, Spanish 2, Spanish 3, it's an actual immersion program?
Correct. So that came from the feedback from you all, and the parents that we received feedback from, that it would be better served. Since we don't currently offer Spanish to 6th graders, we can make that accommodation for the Immersion Spanish.
And then you'd said that it would be more challenging for part-time staff, but I do know that we do have part-time staff in other areas that travel. So, is that what we would be doing? Like, instead of hiring seven part-time teachers, would we not hire one teacher to travel, and would be full-time but working part-time at different middle schools?
So, it would be several part-time positions. So when you have to allocate, and I want to let HR expand upon that, but typically when you have to allocate for a full-time position, you have different...
Right, right.
The full-time allocation is different than a part-time allocation, so...
Right, but we do sometimes combine that, right? Where we have someone that has several part-time allocations at different schools, to make a full-time position, they just travel, that's what I mean.
Correct. So, the full-time person has different levels, so different assignments, school assignments, but they equal one FTE, correct?
Right, so my question is then, if we are asking, like say, we went with Option 2, it would be several part-time jobs, but a full-time teacher could, for example, do two middle schools that are both part-time to make a full-time position? And then you'd only need one teacher versus two?
If the schedule aligns?
Yeah, I was going to say, it depends on, Jim Smith, Senior Executive Director...
I know you are.
It depends on, so if we're saying it's for 6th grade...
Right.
All 6th grades now with the master schedule, all teach at the same time. So it depends on the need of each school and availability of the teachers. So that's where DL would come into play, where we would try to leverage DL, to make sure that we're able to offer to all the students same time. The difficulty is, when you hire for different, what we call Point 2 is one class...
Right.
It's hard to spread that person throughout the city. So, it takes some work with staffing in individual schools, and leveraging the distance learning master schedule.
So, we would then not be able to, I mean, I guess my question is, would we be able to then have teachers travel, or how much, how many students would have to do distance learning, I guess is, and I know it would depend, but are we looking at, would we be staffing, for example, Christopher Farms' attrition rate into Landstown is much smaller than the attrition rate, say, at Great Neck?
So, I don't have a crystal ball percent...
No, no, no.
But would it, to try to make it easier, let's say we had 40 students at Great Neck...
Right.
One section, 30 students weren't at one section.
Right.
With the other 10, instead of using another teacher at Great Neck, we can offer those 10 students distance learning opportunities, as well as some of the other schools, as long as we keep that class of 30.
Right, so if you've got a class of three or four, very small, they would then have to do distance learning. Because this, I'm asking you this because I literally talked to a parent this afternoon about this.
That is correct.
And I was under the impression it was going to be different, so I'm trying to get clarity here. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, on Slide 11, you have given us some information relative to costs. And if I'm following your information correctly, you indicate that currently, the Middle School program, which would involve as many as four middle schools, has an estimated cost of around $426,000 and some change.
So that is the current two, the top row is the current two middle schools. The second row, that is if we maintained and added those additional two middle schools as proposed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so it's the existing two, represents the $426?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my question is, as we go down to Option Number 1, consolidating all of that into Virginia Beach Middle School, one would assume that would lower the expenses, but I'm going to make an assumption, on top of my assumption, that the additional costs are as a result of the transportation needs that would be used to get kids from various schools to VB Middle School? Is that the reason for the increase?
So, primarily, if you look at some of your board materials, if you look at the last page, you'll see a packet that looks like this, that has more in-depth explanation that might be more helpful for you. But yes, it does increase your transportation and staffing costs.
Okay, hang on, hang on, I may be digging down into it. Okay, needless to say...
Yes, sir.
The additional increase can be summarized by...
It's a combination of transportation and, you're talking about for Option 1, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so it's a combination of transportation and instructional cost.
Okay.
So if you're looking at that particular page, I don't know if you ever found it...
I never found it. That's okay, one day when I have spare time, I'll go, no, 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 that's fine.
But yes, both the instructional staffing costs, as well as transportation, have a little bit of an increase, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. I don't really necessarily have questions, but more of comments. And so, Mark and I both had what I would describe as a delightful visit on what I call Torde Dual Language Immersion Program. And first and foremost, I just wanted to express my thanks and gratitude to our folks for gathering all this great information. And the fact that our response rate was so high, the amount of emails that we've received as a School Board have been extremely high, show, I think, two things. One, parental commitment to this program, but two, I think it demonstrates the great work of Virginia Beach City Public Schools for building a program that people see such great value and integrity with, that they advocate so strongly for their kids. And I have to say, my experience visiting the classroom was extremely remarkable. I think we were in kindergarten class, right? It was one of the first years where, you know, I think that we're one week in, two weeks in, and the teacher's already speaking in Spanish the whole, you know, good portion of the time. It's just exciting to see our kids, you know, learning and doing activities, recognizing the language. And then, you know, in the 4th grade, I had some, I gathered my own qualitative data from the kids, and asked them how they enjoyed the experience. And one of them told me and shared with me that they enjoyed speaking to their friends in front of their parents, because their parents didn't know what they were saying. And I thought that was how creative of a use case. And then when we went to middle school... And then when we went to middle school, um, this is where I was just so impressed by the delivery of our, of our program, is that, you know, the teacher was having, um, an activity that day where she's explaining rules, concepts, um, in Spanish to the kids, and, you know, thinking about the complexity of the game, thinking about the rules being communicated, you know, it was just remarkable to see this learning and the quality of instruction that our, our students receive. But, on top of all of that, I think there is one common theme that I saw, which was an eagerness to learn and a desire to be in that place. And it's interesting to see and to observe, I think, you know, because sometimes you're like, well, am I just going to the right classrooms and whatnot, you know, and so I'm always peeking around and, and looking in. But what I saw from our kids, specifically within that middle school class, was joy and excitement. And to me, that speaks on top of, you know, the outcomes that I shared last, um, board meeting, with why programs like this are beneficial to the lifelong learning of our students and to our kids. And so, I just wanted to express my thanks to, you know, our, to our school folks for helping organize those visits, and I would encourage our board members, who, I know many folks have already visited, but if you haven't, you know, please, you know, prioritize in taking time. Um, so, I just wanted to share some of those comments and my thoughts, as I know it took, you know, some time from our, our staff, but it was truly a great experience, and I'm hoping to continue to see this program grow into middle school. And so, my only question is just an ask of if we can get the files that we were just provided today in electronic format too, so. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Melick?
Well, it's no secret that I'm a super fan of, um, the Spanish immersion program, um, but Dr. Wilkerson, you used, you used this phrase, these two words, a few times in your presentation, and that was program fidelity. And I worry about the fidelity of the program based on what I'm reading from the parents. Um, what concerns me the most, some parents are like, yes, wherever it is, my kid is going because the educational piece is so important. But there are a lot of comments in here that say, if this program does not continue at Great Neck Middle School, I'm dropping out, or I'm going to private school, or, um, my kid will not go to Lynnhaven. And so, you know, I live on the other side of the tracks, and so, I've, we already talked about this, I've seen that occur in my own neighborhood, um, with Landstown versus Princess Anne, and so, as difficult as that is for me to say, that's, that's the truth in, in this whole thing, like, A, we have a massive staffing problem. Do we? Because people do want this, right? They do, and so, we've expanded because of a need, and now we're in trouble because of staffing. And so, I think there are many of us up here who are willing to find that money to keep that program going. What I didn't like seeing was, well, it's fine over here on this side, just close it over here, because it just really matters to us over here because it's doing so well. And that's the equity piece that's killing me, um, because there are families at Bayside, and there are families at Christopher Farms who love this program equally, and they're watching it just kind of crumble because of some of those same school choice, choices that are being made. So, I'm assuming that is why you brought this whole thing to us, um, A, to consolidate staffing, and B, to do a central location, so it's kind of, you know, educationally sound. I have a question. I don't know that I believe the results if we vote to have a central location, I don't, do you believe we will have enough students there to keep it viable in our community from anywhere? Um, one, one parent even said, it's easier to get to, um, such and such from such and such, and I did the math, and it's really not true, it's just wanting to keep that one program open at a particular school, and I understand that, it is working really well in that area, it is. Okay, did I ask a question that you can answer?
I don't know if I'm going to give you the answer that you're looking for, but I will say a couple of things. So, I first will say that, um, this program has been in existence for some time now, and we have had, um, a lot of success, and we've had a lot of students who have carried through the program and, um, and has sustained. I will also say that, um, the time of the survey, the parents had limited information. Um, I think, you know, it's difficult sometimes to provide what they will do moving forward when they really don't have a whole lot to, to go on, and I feel like we have further developed that as we have moved, um, along in the process, and I think we're at a place now where hopefully today's presentation gave them more clarity. I think they had more information during the survey than they had initially, so, um, maybe the, they, the, the lack of that information maybe, uh, didn't give them a whole lot of, uh, guidance in that, but it's difficult to say, I mean, we can't really make those predictions about, um, what parents' decisions will be with whichever option.
The other truth is, there are families that bought houses in neighborhoods where there was a Spanish immersion program, I mean, that is, that is real. Um, I mean, and I know it, it's not going to stop tomorrow, but I just want to know that we're doing right by everybody, because when you read all of these comments, um, everybody loves the program. I just want them to love the program more than they do the building.
And that's why we, we definitely wanted to take the feedback from you, from the community, so that whichever, um, option was chosen, there was some fidelity of the program built in, so, um, we heard, we heard you, we heard our community to say that the Spanish, the traditional Spanish one probably wouldn't be enough, so, we were trying to, to help with that process.
It will not be enough.
So, we were trying to, to help with whichever option, whichever way, um, you all chose to, to go, whichever direction, to, to give some support for that.
And if I could, I'd go back to middle school, and I, I want to do sixth grade and all the way through high school, all over again, in, in an immersion program, it's, it's really.
Well, we're hiring.
Yeah. Yes, I do, I do.
Ms. Terry.
Um, yes, thank you, why, why it's no shock that, that this program is loved by the, by the select communities that get to go, because it's not offered, obviously, everywhere. It, and, and we're sitting here at the same conversation, talking about using operating funds or operating budget to help with healthcare, at the same time, operating funds, budget to use for staff, you know, benefits and raises and salaries, so, you know, we, we do have some, some hard decisions to make, because the, the money can only, you know, a dollar can only be spent once. Um, my question is, so, option one, it is consolidated at Virginia Beach Middle School, I'm a student there, after Virginia Beach Middle School, like at a high school, what is the highest Spanish that I will be able to complete?
You want to talk about the AP?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and that option one?
Sure, yeah, so, for both option one and option two, students can take four years of upper-level Spanish in high school. So, we have Spanish four, Spanish five, AP Spanish Language, and AP Spanish Literature would be the highest level a student could take.
Okay, so, so, option one and option two, students still can maximize their opportunities to do those four and end up right there.
Right, yeah, and of course, just like with any elective, it depends on student enrollment, staffing availability, but we do have those four courses available.
Okay, for both students, either choice that we choose.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think, I think that's very helpful, important to know, that, that students in option one and/or option two may take all those high-level courses, and so, we're not taking away their, their, um, foreign language, their, their Spanish opportunities. Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, Dr. Green?
Thank you. Um, like Mr. Cummings and, and Mr. Bowen still, I wasn't with them, I went solo, because I, I like traveling solo. Um, I visited, uh, the, uh, language immersion program at Bayside Elementary, and boy, um, I remember when we started Christopher New, uh, Christopher Farms, but the enthusiasm, because I know that program is a lot newer, um, to see the, uh, the principal, she was awesome, and, and just sharing with me, taking me to every level, and you could just see the course progression, uh, the student excitement, uh, the engagement, I got to see a science lesson, um, in the Spanish dual language, where they were talking about weather and precipitation, um, and even the introductory foundations that they give our students in, uh, elem, in kindergarten. Also, the enthusiasm of the teachers, and what I love was the sense of community, um, that it builds with dual language, e, even some of the kids who are not in it were like, oh, you know, como soy ama, hola, uh, the, the excitement you could feel. Um, I'm going to step out in a lane that I probably shouldn't, because I had an opportunity to have a visit from a student who was staying with a friend of mine from Spain, uh, and the student friend, her parents, who are my friends, uh, she's a student at the Global Studies Academy, so, as you know, we have the exchange program, and she had a student from Spain, so, I, I had an opportunity, you know, to talk with her. Any thought, when you look at the curriculum or the different options for the Global Studies Academy, and, and this is something that may help continue it in high school, um, adding a track possibly for some type of language immersion, since we do have the exchange program at the Global Studies, uh, Academy, because to me, to just stop eighth grade, you get four extra courses. Uh, to me, I think we're losing a great opportunity by not taking advantage of what's available in the Global Studies Academy by adding some type of another track where the students can continue, um, you know, if they are accepted in the Global Studies Academy with that, uh, in addition to the other opportunities that our students have, because I know the tracks are varied at Global Studies based on what your interest is, so, just something to think about.
Um, yeah, and I can speak to that a little bit, Ms. Windish, um, the Global Studies Academy Coordinator, and I've talked about some ways to build content-based courses in Spanish at the academy, um, she's been doing some outreach in the middle schools and having her students go visit the Great Neck DLI students and Christopher Farms, um, and Landstown DLI students, so, some of that's in the works, we've got to get more of those kids over to Tallwood, you know, we've got a lot of opportunities at high school, so, lots to compete with, but that's something we've been talking about.
Okay, so, um, I have some questions, and I don't know if they're really, uh, for Dr. Robertson, or if they are, um, for you all, but, um, so, we have fifty-five elementary schools, and I, I have to bring this up because I've had a couple of constituents ask me about this, because with fifty-five elementary schools, we currently have five schools that are elementary schools that are offering DLI. Correct? Um, and from the sounds of things, it does not sound like the staffing is available to progress, and as the program is, is it feasible for us to continue as it sits, from a staffing perspective?
Yeah, I can take that. Um, all indications, um, are that it is not, which is why we're here.
Okay.
We, we have a significant challenge with staffing, what our current plan is.
Okay. Um, and so, I'm going to ask it again, because it was asked of me, um, because, um, some members of the public in my district have expressed concerns that none of them have the opportunity to be able to participate in DLI, and so, is there any, um, and, and I know we're talking about potential, um, modifications to scale back on costs, not pick up, but, is there any potential for expanding the DLI offerings and/or attendance zones for the elementary, um, offering?
So, any conversation that we would have to have around expanding zones would probably fall back to, if we got more students, um, would we be able to staff them, and then at what schools would we expand to? Because this is, uh, unlike an academy that students can apply to from across the city, this is more like a program where, based upon that your attendant zone, whether or not you get a chance to participate or not.
Okay, thank you for that, and I, I just wanted to, you know, point that out, because as we're talking about the potential for VB Middle and the middle schools, um, and, you know, I, there's another colleague that mentioned, you know, an equity issue, there's a huge inequity that less than ten percent of our elementary school students are offered this opportunity to attend, um, I, I'm not talking about, you know, getting rid of the elementary school opportunity, obviously, but, um, I'm, I'm happy that we have this opportunity here, but, um, it's, it's not offered to every student, and so, um, there are people, and I know that we have all this great feedback here from the families, um, that are in DLI programs, um, but what we don't have is the input from the families that, that don't have that opportunity at all. Um, and I don't know that there's really, um, a good way to get it, but I just, I had to mention that because, again, somebody asked me about it. Ms. Rogers?
Thanks, um, that was a great point, uh, Chair Brown, specifically, um, because there actually is no elementary school in my district either that offers this, except for Cook, but with that, I think it's especially important at Cook and Bayside that these programs continue simply because of the way that those programs are set up with the students who are coming from primarily Spanish-speaking homes, and this program actually helps them understand the English language, as well as help their peers understand the Spanish language, but it also keeps these students from falling behind with their academics because of the way the material is presented to them in their native language. And so, I think that is so important for our Spanish-speaking students who are, have access to these programs, specifically at Bayside and at Cook, that we continue, especially for those students who, um, need that, um, presentation in order to be successful in elementary school. However, my question, um, is that my, my biggest concern right now, on slide fourteen, is overall, we have forty-two percent of our respondents saying that they're unsure and they need more information, especially the sixty-four percent from Bayside, and then the twenty-two percent that say that their child would, um, only attend theirs own middle school. So, that's sixty-four percent of respondents who are either unsure or will not attend, versus the thirty-six who would continue with the program. What are, what are we going to do to reach out to those parents so that they can make a decision? Because right now, overwhelmingly, we don't have the buy-in at thirty-six percent. So, because there's such a high margin of I-don't-knows, what are we going to do so that, because we have to make a decision, so, I need to know, what do our parents want? And by this data, I don't have that answer.
Yeah, so, that's a good question, Ms. Rogers, and, uh, we have no plans to go back out and put another survey out to, to those staff. We ju, um, the team has, has spent a tremendous amount of time on this particular project on top of all the other things that they have, and unfortunately, the information we have right now is the only information we're going to be able to have for the presentation that you guys will have in, in two weeks on, and information, and then in four weeks on action. Now, if directed by the board to go out and put another survey, then we certainly will do that. do that.
Okay. And again, I just, I have a big concern that we don't have a good direction from the public, from the public, and especially for those of us who need to make a decision for our constituents, and this data doesn't give me a clear idea.
Can I say something?
Vice Chair Williams?
Yeah, just to clarify, so the community doesn't misunderstand. We're not talking about anything with elementary. Elementary is good. We're, okay, keeping that and everything. Okay, so is it your, just for a process question, in two weeks, will you staff be bringing back a recommendation? Or will you bring back these two options and one of us has, like, what is the process moving forward?
So yes, we will bring you back a recommendation based upon the feedback we've heard from you tonight.
And it will be one of these options?
Further conversation, yes, one of these two options.
Okay, and that will be on information, your recommendation based on what you've heard and what you've done already, and then two weeks after that, the vote for action.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dwyer?
I guess I'll accept that in response to my colleague about concerns for parents. The percentage of students that can participate is not that high anyway. So, you know, which to me is, that's the, that's probably the downside for me. I'd like to see more students be able to participate, especially, I'm in District One, and we don't have an elementary school represented. So, yeah, I mean, there, the input, the numbers aren't there. I mean, the percentage is just not there. So, yeah, I don't see why we can't make a decision tonight.
And I'll just respond, we're going to vote on this through the regular process, but we will need to get around one, one concept here. Ms. Felton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. I'd just like to make a point that my first introduction to the Dual Language Immersion Program came through Cook Elementary when Principal Conyers was a principal there, very impressed by it because she built a whole community around that immersion program. It didn't only include the students, but it also included the parents and all other community groups around in that area that she had. Even Vibe was a part of that particular program. I'd just like to just mention what Ms. Williams said about the options that you're going to bring back to us as well, and a particular point that my colleague, Ms. Milne, made about the equity. Most, if not all, some of the parents are just now finding out about this program because they're hearing us talk about it now. And I get that question, did not know it exists. So, you know, the equity part of that is, if we're going to put a survey back out again, how we would approach our entire community. It's a big community, being that I'm the only particular one that's at large and trying to get to all the community things. It's okay. But just know this, that some of the parents, some of the, our partners out there, this is the first that they know of this program because we are having this extensive conversation about it. It is a great program. Cook proved me, I was just blown away with it. And then I visited Trentwood at one time, looking at the students and how they had peers helping students with the program, students helping students with it as well. So it is really good. And also, our Future Teachers Program, when I was at Crease as well, Ms. Conyers at Crease, our Future Teachers had a lot of work to do with this program. It is a very good program. I would encourage all students, as I do now, that they have another language, that it makes them well-rounded, it makes them global, eligible when they walk out into the world. Thank you. And I think you've done a great job presenting this, Ms. Felton, and thank you so much, and your staff. You've given me a lot of information that I can go back and talk with the community about communities. It is a very good program. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We have one item for close. Oh.
I just had a quick random thing, sorry. So I definitely hear my colleagues' concerns around inequity and, you know, folks in our districts and whatnot, not being able to attend one of the schools. And so, I mean, it's the same thing with District Seven. And so I wonder if there's, you know, this is a two-piece conversation. One is, you know, I think adjusting a problem or fixing a problem that's in front of us today, which is, you know, the financial scalability of our middle school program. But two, if there's a future conversation about what does growth and expansion of dual language immersion look like for, you know, early, for elementary schools and expanding that outside of, you know, what exists now? So I see that as a two-part conversation. So I don't think, well, I definitely echo the sentiment of inequity, but I don't think that should necessarily impact, you know, what we're thinking about in terms of, you know, the middle school option. I think that that future, hopefully in future, that we can maybe think about what is growing and scaling our elementary programs look like to expansion across the city. That's how I would probably try to solve this problem of, you know, kids in our districts not being able to attend because I'd love for our kids to be able to attend. So what does that price look like? And I think that's a great future conversation that we can explore, or hopefully explore.
Ms. Milne?
Not that it matters, but just to clarify, my inequity comment was about closing part of the program and leaving one side open. That was my equity piece. But until all of our teachers graduate from college with a Spanish degree and a degree in education or something else, this is always going to be a problem for us. Yeah. It's staffing.
Ms. Lynetti, do you think that we have time to handle the one issue enclosed, the one question enclosed?
Actually, like, a five-minute conversation.
Okay, I think so, too. All right, Vice Chair Williams, if you please read in.
I move that the School Board recesses into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings laws set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraphs 2, 7, 8, 19, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student legal counsel and if the student is in mind or the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable bias to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employee to retain by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Nineteen, discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities and briefings by staff members, legal counsel or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related threat to public safety. Discussion of information subject to the exclusion in Subdivision Two or Fourteen and 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information, technology system, or software program. Or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure. Namely, to discuss A, personnel matters, reimbursement of attorney's fees for an employee; B, discussion regarding security matters at certain administrative buildings; C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases; D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
All right. Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
I don't bother with that.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you.
The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such closed meetings was, meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to certify closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for certification of closed session.
Thank you. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our formal meeting, and we're going to recess now.
I'm not supposed to read this.
Oh, you do have to read that. I'm sorry.
Resolution regarding payment of employee legal fees. Whereas on January 21, 2025, a VB CPS teacher was charged with assault and battery of a student. And whereas the charge against the teacher was dismissed by the Virginia Beach General District Court on April 15, 2025, and the teacher has chosen not to have the charge expunged from his record. And whereas the teacher is seeking payment of legal fees in accordance with Policy 259 in the amount of $3,400 in fees and costs incurred in defending this charge. And whereas School Board Policy 2-59 allows the School Board to pay an employee's legal fees incurred as a result of a lawsuit filed against the employee in the employee's official capacity and provided that this lawsuit is later dismissed against the employee. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board authorizes payment of the employee's legal fees and costs in the amount of $3,400. And further resolved that the clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the teacher, the teacher's attorney, the School Board attorney, the chief financial officer, the director of business services, and the chief human resource officer, who is directed to place a copy of this resolution in the employee's personnel file adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this 14th day of October, 2025.
All right. Moved by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote on the motion made by Vice Chair Williams.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion-